I'm sorry, I have no help.
Welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. I'm Andrea Keen, Chair of the Wayzata School Board, and I call to order the Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting for October 11th, 2021. We're excited to know that our students and staff have been back in school for over a month, and we look forward to hearing all about how things are going as part of tonight's meeting. This meeting is open to the public and also livestreamed on YouTube. The recording of this meeting will also be available on the Wayzata Public Schools website by clicking on District and then on School Board. Okay, let's get started. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Sarah Johansson.
Here.
Bonita Lucky.
Here.
Sheriff Posey.
Here.
Chris McCullough.
Here.
Linda Cohen.
Here.
Faith Anderson.
Here.
Andrea King.
Here. Thank you. First on our agenda this evening, we have the approval of the Agenda and approval of the Consent Agenda items. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Consent Agenda items are listed in full in your Board Book packet. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda and Agenda?
I so move.
Nice second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Chris McCullough.
Yes.
Sheriff Posey.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky. Yes. Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
Andrea King.
Yes. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have reports from organizations. Do we have a representative this evening from the Wayzata High School Student Council? Well, great. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ramira Ambrose. I'm the Senior Vice President for Student Council this year. The last month at the high school has been crazy, eventful, and a fun month to be a part and to be a Trojan. So to start off, we had our dance on September 25th, and we had a record number of tickets sold this year with 2,000 tickets. And the dance was super eventful. We had great attendance, and the light show with the DJ was super memorable, and the kids really had a good time. Following up with that, we had the Pep Fest on September 28th, and this was also in great attendance with several different clubs that were involved. We also had football players this year as the emcees of the event, the showstoppers and the cheer squad, the band, and we also had great, great attendance throughout all four grades. To follow that, we had the Black Party and the Homecoming Football Game. We had 29 clubs involved at the Black Party this year, and we also had awesome food trucks, and families and students really loved the food trucks this year. And special thank you to the school board for your booth this year. We really appreciate it. To follow that, we had the Homecoming Football Game, and it was filled with students and definitely an unforgettable time. We really enjoyed the powder toss at halftime, as well as the naming of the Royal Majesty for this year, and that was Avi Pujabi. To follow that, on Saturday, we had our Powderpuff, and at the Powderpuff Event this year, we had 12 teams. This event is a joint event between Student Council and National Honor Society, whose goal is to raise money for Tackle Cancer, and they'll be continuing to do that throughout the month of October with our coming up football game that's raising money for Tackle Cancer with bandanas and shirts that they'll be selling at lunch. In terms of the student body in general, for the next month, we have midterms coming up. We have the PSAT taking place on the 13th, and then we have a lot of our sports teams for the fall going into sections. The tennis team, I believe, started today, and then we have volleyball and soccer as well. Shout out to the girls' soccer team. We have our first section game at 5 against Armstrong at home, and we'd love for you guys to attend. But besides that, it's been a really great month, and it's been awesome to be back in person, and we look forward to an awesome rest of the school year.
Great. Thank you for the report. Let me see if my four colleagues have any questions or comments. I will just say that it was really fun being part of the Black Party. Thanks for inviting us, and we hope to do it again next year.
Of course.
All right. Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. All right. Next on our agenda, we have recognitions. So I will hand it over to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Board and our attendees this evening. Thank you for joining us at our School Board meeting. It's always my privilege to convene the recognitions portion of the School Board meeting, and we have three of those this evening. And it's our tradition to always announce the names of the individuals who since the last meeting have announced their intent to retire. And we have one such person tonight, and her name is Mary Daniels, a paraprofessional in community education. And I'm not seeing Mary here, but I'm sure she's tuned in on YouTube, and we'll give her a round of applause regardless. Thank you, Mary, for your dedicated service to the school district. Our second recognition this evening, it goes to Mandy Kraus from West Middle School as our October 2021 Employee of the Month. And I'd like to invite Mandy to please come forward. Mandy, congratulations. I'm going to share a little bit about Mandy on behalf of her nomination, and those who nominated you wrote a very nice summary of your work. And then we'll give you an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like. Wayzata West Middle School is proud to recommend Mandy Kraus as the October Employee of the Month. Mandy has entered 24th year teaching, 7th grade social studies at West. Mandy is a learner-centered teacher who brings expertise, innovation, and enthusiasm to her classroom every day. During the 2021 school year, Mandy taught in all three of our learning models, hybrid, distance, and in-person. She was a leader in the building in creating quality learning experiences in each of the learning models and often led professional development opportunities for the West staff as we grew our capacity to provide virtual and asynchronous learning opportunities. Mandy currently serves on the West Guiding Coalition and as the Building Professional Development Lead. She has been a key driver of West's advisory programming that is focused on building community and supporting students in owning their learning. Mandy has also been a building leader in utilizing MyTime, a flexible time built into the West's daily schedule. Her MyTime sessions support student learning and have allowed students to go deeper and explore passion areas. A colleague at West had this to say about Mandy. "Mandy consistently goes above and beyond, not only for her students, but for the staff. She is a building leader in everything from professional development to advisory. The countless hours Mandy puts into everything, from planning lessons to leading a staff training, deserve to be recognized. Mandy models a love for learning for her students and is a colleague that others look up to for her commitment to student learning. Mandy is so deserving of this recognition, and we congratulate her as the Wayzata Employee of the Month. Mandy, congratulations."
Thank you. Well, I guess the cat is out of the bag. 24 years. I don't feel that old. But I feel like I've grown up and grown into my profession here in Wayzata, and I think between the community, the students, and the support that we have, great things have been happening, and it's been a wonderful place to have my career, and I can't wait to continue it here. It makes it a pleasure to put that effort and time into because it's a great place to be, and I'm happy to be here. Anyway, thanks for the recognition. But really, it's a joy to continue this profession and do it each day with the kids. We were just on a field trip today, and all you have to do is take a minute, listen, watch, and you get exactly why we're doing this job, and it's totally worth it. So thank you for the opportunity and the continued support. I'm looking forward to more. I've got a few to go. I'm not going to count them. We're just going to see what happens. It's going to be fun. Thank you.
And we have one more recognition this evening. And we are very fortunate to have a couple representatives from the Wayzata Youth Baseball Association here this evening, Ryan Boutwell and Joe Fussaro, if they could both come forward, please, and join me at the podium. Thank you so much for being here. They're here to offer a donation to the school district, and I'd like to read a script that kind of provides a bit of a summary about the donation and the focus upon where these funds have gone and/or will go in the near future. So thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your generous contribution to the school district. So I'd like to share the following. The Plymouth Wayzata Youth Baseball Association has been working closely with the school district about improving the Wayzata West Middle School baseball fields. After close communication with the association's representatives and the district's administration and construction partners, the district administration and the Youth Association Board of Directors recommend that the district proceed with the following projects and with the following pledged donation from the association as follows: Lights for the fields: $457,974; two more batting cages and four bullpens: $151,450; and two scoreboards: $24,950. The grand total donation: $634,374. To date, $482,984 of the projects have been completed. The uncompleted items will be completed next summer, 2022. Until the date of completion, the district will hold the funds in a separate account for the specific designated use. We're extremely grateful to the Youth Association for their generous donation and for everything they've done for our youth and families in the community. And I've already introduced our two representatives, and we're very happy to have them here tonight, and I would like to give them an opportunity to make a couple words if they would.
Good evening, Chair Keen and members of the School Board. We're very excited to be here this evening. This has been an incredible journey to get to this point, and we're excited to be making this donation this evening. So, like it was announced, my name is Joe Fussaro. I'm the former president of PWYBA, spent over 10 years on the Board and worked on this project for many years. I'm here along with Ryan Boutwell, who's the current president. We're both just going to say a couple quick words here. You know, I've lived in this community for over 20 years. I had two sons attend the Wayzata School District schools and graduate recently from Wayzata High School. It's an incredible place to raise a family and have them go to school. So thank you for everything you guys do. It's just fabulous to be part of this community. As part of that, I spent over 10 years coaching baseball and being on the PWYBA Board. And I did that because the game of baseball and youth athletics, I think, are really important part activity as our kids all grow up. School is such an important part, but I believe the activities they do after school, like baseball and many others, are also very, very important. And baseball was a passion of mine, and that is why I chose to do what I did for so long. And as part of that, you know, the game of baseball, you need really good facilities and great fields to play the game of baseball. And we had an opportunity to improve the fields. We thought we saw an opportunity to improve the field at West Middle School. It was a great facility for us, but we thought it could be even better, and we had a growing need to improve our middle school players. This project started, it's been a crazy journey, but it started back in the fall of 2015. It was the first time we walked the field with John Deutsch and his team, and led us to where we are today. So with that, with this donation that we're making of over 634,000, I wanted to say a couple quick thank yous just to how we got here today. One, I want to thank Jay Hasby. Jay Hasby was a former School Board member, and I just read recently he'll be back in a couple weeks, back on the School Board again. Jay was our champion for this project at the time when this kicked off, and he has a passion for baseball and youth athletics as well. And he really helped get this going and was a mentor to myself and others to help us through this. John Deutsch, the Director of Facilities, countless meetings, hours spent together, communication since 2015 to get these fields built. Jim Westrom, the former Executive Director of Finance. Jim was instrumental in pulling the right people together and helping kind of break down some hurdles for us as we learned how to navigate this and get to this point. And then, lastly, I did have a chance at one point, before this was all done, to meet with the School Board one time, and the willingness for the School Board, who's very busy, to take their time out and listen to what we were trying to accomplish was instrumental in helping get this accomplished. And so we're very appreciative of that. This donation, it's a lot of money for a nonprofit youth organization. It's something we spent many, many years. We identified this as a need, and we spent many years of fundraising and saving money and building for this point to donate this money, and we're excited to make this donation this evening. So with that, let me turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you again for having us. Again, my name is Ryan Boutwell. I serve as the current volunteer Board President for Plymouth Wayzata Youth Baseball. Our vision is to deliver an amazing baseball experience and memories that lasts a lifetime for families and athletes. And our mission is to create a fun, safe, and high-quality learning environment for youth baseball players and their families by excelling at all aspects of the youth baseball experience. Consistent with PWYBA's vision and mission, we're thrilled to partner with the Wayzata Public Schools to support the Wayzata West Middle School project. This field system provides a much-needed facility for our middle-school-aged kids, and once fully complete, will provide a top-notch venue that improves the experience for PWYBA players. PWYBA has a long history of contributing to field improvement projects in the community. Not only do families who participate in our association receive a great baseball experience, but we're proud that they also participate in directly enhancing the community in which they live through field improvement projects such as this. A special thanks to Joe Fussaro, our past Board President, and Joe Bulkey, our past treasurer, for really spearheading this project and working in conjunction with the Wayzata Public Schools. Thank you all for your support in this project.
And that concludes our recognitions this evening. Thanks again for being here for those, and for those of you who came only for that reason. Now is a good time to make a graceful exit, if you're so inclined, or you're more than welcome to stay. But thanks and congratulations. Appreciate you being here.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening, we have Audience Opportunity to Address the School Board. And this section of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the School Board. Sign-up sheets are available at the back table. Please fill in your name, address, and the topic you'd like to address. I have a pile going right here, but you're still welcome to add yourself to the list if you'd like. This evening, each speaker will be invited up to the podium to speak for three minutes with a total of one hour allotted for public comment. Our Administrative Specialist, Tyler Reinhardt, will help us keep track of the time by holding up a red card at the three-minute mark. Please end your comments when you see the red card. If you have already shared your thoughts with the School Board, please consider letting someone new address the Board. If a community member shares a message similar to yours, please consider shortening your message or presenting as a group. We also respectfully request that district students, parents, and district residents be given priority over non-residents of the district. Please note that this time is allotted for the presentation of audience comments only, and no board discussion or debate will follow the comments. It is a longstanding board practice to not engage in discussion or debate as a part of Audience Opportunity to Address the Board. However, there are occasions when the Board finds it necessary. A comment made at last month's regular meeting is one of those occasions where a particular comment needs a response. At the September 13th School Board meeting, a community member used the word "colored" to describe one of our students. This language does not align with the district's mission or values. The School Board received a great deal of feedback from our families that this term was disrespectful and offensive. We all agree and stand by our commitment to increase awareness as we continuously learn, improve, and grow. It is possible that members of our community don't know that using this word to describe a person of color is disrespectful. We see this as an opportunity for learning. This is essential for each of us to ensure a world-class education that prepares each and every student to thrive in a welcoming learning environment as well as excel in our ever-changing global society. When an incident such as this occurs, we will be reflective and seek to learn from our mistakes. This learning will allow us to take actions that deliver on our equity commitment and our district roadmap for the benefit of all. Okay, let's get started. First, are there any students who would like to address the School Board this evening? Okay. Then first, we'll hear from Karen Sams. You're welcome to come up to the podium.
Hello, everybody. My name is Karen Sams. I have four children, and I really would like to speak tonight about keeping politics out of the classroom. Many occasions in 6th grade at one of our Wayzata middle schools, my son came home and told me about politically biased comments made by his teachers. One of his teachers decided not to teach her lesson the day after the Chauvin Trial and instead shared her own political views on the situation. My son told me about a classmate who started to cry during class because his father is a police officer, and he felt that this teacher was attacking his father. He said, quote, "He's doing his best." After the events of January 6th, the same teacher was too upset to teach her scheduled class and took the time to talk about her own opinions. Let me ask you this. If teachers started teaching their religious beliefs in the classroom, what do you think would happen? There would be a massive uproar, and rightly so. Religious indoctrination in school is not okay, but political indoctrination is? The current School Board appears to support this kind of thing, and they shouldn't. A School Board is supposed to be nonpartisan in nature. We need to get politics out of the classroom and focus on what's really important here: reading, writing, math, science, not politics, which is something members of our community feel very different about. I personally would like to see more transparency from the Board. There's never really any discussion between Board members at these meetings. They all seem to agree on every topic, even controversial issues. Is that really true? Everybody's in agreement? We need balance on our Board. There is a lot of diversity of opinion in our community, which is great, but the current Board does not reflect this diversity. We need a Board that represents a different viewpoints of parents in our district, and this is what I'm going to base my vote on. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to share and clarify that the School Board cannot endorse one School Board candidate over another. Therefore, we do not permit any campaign materials, signs, t-shirts, buttons, or spoken campaign messages. So if you could refrain from talking about the election, we appreciate it. Thank you so much for ensuring a fair election. All right. Next, we have Valentina Ayers. Welcome.
My name is Valentina Ayers.
I apologize.
Ayers. Okay. I am a first-generation immigrant. I came from Russia, have an international marriage. I am from Russia, but I am not Russian. My ethnic group is Chuvash, which originated near Mongolia. All the other related ethnic groups around us are Muslim, but we are not. We do not fit neatly into the ethnic categories that appear on school demographic questionnaires. I lost my mom at age six. My grandmother raised me and my brother. This is how I know her story, which became history. My grandmother's family was named Kulaks, enemies of people, in 1930. I'm getting emotional because it went through my generation. Just because they were a little bit of peasants, and her dad refused to join a collective farm, everything was taken from them. They were sent 1,000 miles away to Arhangil, in Arctic Circle, in a train used for animal transportation. Many didn't make it first winter. My grandma was a 10-year-old girl at that time. Her older sister died on the way to Arhangil. Her dad was imprisoned there and never came back. My grandma had to denounce her dad in order to get an education and have a profession. All this has done in the name of equity, to make sure that everyone had exactly the same outcome. This story happened with many families, not just mine, estimate about 10 million people. Soviets used class division. Now you want to use race division, and what is the purpose? The division back in Russia brought the ugly to a degree nobody will fathom to even imagine. Millions of people died during that time. Now, I'm wondering, why are you bringing a race division to schools, to innocent kids who have friends because they have similar ideas, like each other, like socializing with each other? We were very poor. My grandmother told me that if I want to succeed, I need to study hard. She couldn't help me with homework, but she made sure to check if anything was written in my home notebook after awards homework. I figured that out. That was her trick. When I came here, I realized that whom I should be forever grateful are my teachers, who, as my mentors, were my believers, and I did not want to fail them. They disregarded my family background. They did not divide me and my friends into different groups. They treated me just like all the others, helped me to succeed. I was the first one in 17 years at my school to earn a Medal of Excellence. I am the first one in my grandmother's family to graduate college. When I came here, my husband told me that race, religion, gender don't matter in USA. Kids are developmentally immature. It is unpedagogic.
Sorry to interrupt. Your time is up.
Unhumane.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Justin Hibbits. Welcome.
Evening. I prepared way too many comments for this venue, but it's well down. I'm going to continue with what Karen had said about transparency. We have a complete lack of transparency in this school district. Me, I did not even know about the equity commitment or even discussions of it until it was laid down in front of us. You guys have everybody's email address. So why can't you send out agendas, send out topics that are under discussion? I learned recently that you guys reached out to partners in the district or in the wider community, but you didn't reach out to parents? You couldn't send out a survey to every parent in the district? I know I would have said no. There's no way I would support the equity commitment. And on the topic of the equity commitment, equity, everywhere I read says equity means impartial to everybody, treating everybody equally. However, you explicitly call out that we must focus on immutable characteristics, things that cannot be changed. How is that impartial when you're placing partiality on the immutable characteristics of people? How? Last month, during the performance performance review for Mr. Anderson, his, one of his performance metrics is to hire teachers of color, not attract them, not attract them, hire them. Nobody cares about their actual qualifications. Can you teach? No. What? Are you a person of color according to the, according to the performance metrics? Then sure, you're hired. No, that's not how it works. You hire based on actual qualifications, gender, race, ethnicity, or sexual orientation. None of that matters. If you can teach math, you can teach math. If you can get across to kids, you can get across to kids. Do not focus on the immutable characteristics. That will only lead to division. And to finish this all off, let's go Brandon.
Thank you for your comments. All right, next we have Dr. Melan Sahoni. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair and the school board members for inviting me to, allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Melan Sahoni, and I am a 26-year resident of the YZ School District. Both my children graduated in the K-12 program of the YZ Public Schools. The pandemic has turned our lives upside down, and the children are not spared either. So I was waiting with bated breath at the school board meeting in August when the board was going to vote on the mask mandate. I believe Dr. Anderson gave a compelling presentation based on data, and the board voted appropriately to mandate masks in our schools. I also plead with parents to have those children who are eligible to get vaccinated. Both the mask and the vaccine will do all of us good. Finally, kudos to Dr. Anderson and the board for hiring Director Solway Harry Day to focus on equity and inclusion. The equity commitment was long overdue, and it's the first step in the right direction. All, I repeat, all our children deserve equitable opportunities to be future productive adults. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. All right, those are all the forms. Oh, it looks like I have another one. Debbie Larson. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Debbie Larson. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to visit. I wanted to share a different perspective tonight, something different than I've heard before. So it appears to me that a lot of people in the community have strong ideas one way or another. I don't know. I'm just curious. You don't have to raise your hand or shake your head, but how many people here want an unsafe place for our kids? Anybody want unsafe? Or does anybody, is anybody interested in creating a racist community? I just point that out because I'm pretty sure most of the people in this room, and obviously you folks here on the board, we all want a safe place and nobody wants a racist environment. I think the disconnect, in my opinion, is the approach on how to get there. We have a lot of strong opinions from a lot of people, and I don't know if this forum in which we get up and just share those strong opinions, it doesn't appear to me that that does anything to move forward. So we just come up here and repeat the same opinions, and we get nowhere. I'm not sure how you folks choose to, to receive the information and how you debate on what the appropriate thing is to do. So with that in mind, I have a suggestion for you. So my suggestion is, we have a lot of talented people here in this community. Why don't we gather some of these people with some of these ideas and get together and have those folks visit and share their information and ideas, challenge one another, and see if they can come up with perhaps a different way that's been presented. Who says we have to do things the way they've been outlined? We have a lot of talent here and the ability to be very creative. So let's be leaders in the community in Minnesota and across the country, and maybe let's demonstrate how we can work together to have a better outcome. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have administrative reports and recommendations. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Anderson for our school year and COVID updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to invite Dr. Nathan Plansburg over to the podium. He's going to be sharing in the presentation with me tonight. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide you with a few updates. We've been at school now for, oh, the better part of four weeks plus, and we wanted to give you a few updates. Many of the slides are going to be related to our ongoing challenges and work with navigating through the pandemic. But before we get to more of the details with that, again, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. And I'd just like to start off by indicating and sharing that I think we're off to a really great start, giving all of the challenges and all of the variables that we need to manage and all of the ways forward that we continue to give consideration to. So I really appreciate all the hard work of our administrative team, many who are here tonight, our wonderful teachers, one of whom we awarded this evening for Employee of the Month, and just everybody that pitches in to help make their function operate smoothly so that we can do school. It's challenging enough when we aren't facing health crisis and pandemic, but it's certainly strengthened or embellished and more difficult, if you will, as we continue to move forward. So I just really appreciate all their work, and I appreciate the work and support of the parents and for all that you're doing to help your children to navigate through. I know it's really difficult. It's been hard on you. It's been hard on all of us and also the kids. And we've worked hard, and I'm really proud of the dedicated efforts of our teachers and all of the parapros and everybody that works so hard, day in and day out, to do their very best, given the unique challenges and circumstances that we're working through. At an earlier presentation, we shared these two goals, and they haven't changed. Number one, ensuring the health and safety and well-being of our students and staff. And number two, keeping students in school every day throughout the school year. And I would say with goal number one, after four weeks of school, we're doing okay with that, but it hasn't been without some health concerns that have cropped up during the first four to five weeks of school. We have maintained our in-person learning model, and as I'll share in a moment, that's unlike last year where we started the year late. We were in at least three or four different learning models throughout the course of the year. But so far, we've been able to stay the course with keeping all of our students in school. I referenced last year, and I've kind of coined it, the year of the learning models. Those in attendance tonight and all of our staff certainly will remember shifting gears and taking time to plan for the next move and the next learning model that we were going to implement. And that was challenging in one way and very difficult to implement. And for the current school year, we've referred to that more as the year of mitigation strategies, where the goal was to get kids back in school, keep them there, and manage our mitigation efforts during the course of the school year to help ensure that we're able to keep students there. I shared, I want to make sure I didn't skip one. I've shared this graphic before. I kind of like this one because it shows all of the different things at school districts, not only ours, but across the state and really the nation, maybe worldwide, probably. Working toward all of these protocols and methods to help ensure that we're able to keep kids in school. So whether it's screening and testing, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in some slides that come up a little bit later in the presentation. Social distancing changed a little bit this year. You might remember that six-foot rule last year. They modify that for this year with the guidance from MDH to focus more on a three-foot goal and advise school districts to not use an inability to maintain three feet all the time as a reason to not do in-person learning. So that was a real helpful modification or change to the mitigation protocols. Contact tracing and quarantine. Nate's going to talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation, so I won't give any detail on that. Masking, we've had a lot of conversation about that. It was the primary focus at our August board meeting. And as you all know, we did implement universal pre-K through grade 12 masking for staff and students. Just the good old-fashioned hand washing, covering sneezes, et cetera. If you're not feeling well, stay home, cleaning and disinfecting. And then the final one, ventilation. And I've spoken a little bit about that as well, that over the past decade plus, we've really worked hard on that ventilation component through our facilities upgrades. And as I've shared before, almost without knowing it, we were preparing for a pandemic because a really important part of a mitigation strategy is exchanging air in classrooms. And we exchange the air in the classrooms at a rate beyond what the minimum requirements are. So there's a lot of things that we're very fortunate with in that regard, and that we started that one many years ago to help ensure that we can keep fresh air in the classrooms for kids. A few takeaways, and this goes back to early August from a presentation that was done. MDH meets with our supervisor of health services, Dawn Wilson, and her colleagues from across the metro area or within the state of Minnesota to share insights and priorities in regard to what they should be focusing on as they provide leadership in the district. So as I'd indicated before, in-person instruction really was the primary goal for 2021. Vaccination is still currently listed as the leading strategy to help protect individuals and others. Masks to be worn indoors regardless of that vaccination status. I mentioned the three feet, physical distancing when possible, and of course, staying home when we're not feeling well. And that does complicate getting substitute teachers for our teachers and maintaining a full staffing allocation. But certainly, people aren't feeling well, then they need to take care of themselves and others. I also wanted to just share a few points from another slide from that same presentation back in, in August. And this specifically focuses in a little bit more on children and adolescents. We've learned throughout the timeframe when the Delta variant has become the, the primary strain for COVID-19, that younger children and adolescents are more susceptible to this. And they're, they do have the ability to contribute to the spread, particularly in communities where transmission levels are high. And since that early date in August, and I'll show some graphics on this in a little bit, are, I think, the whole state pretty much, but certainly Hennepin County and, and the metro area has been in that high transmission level. Also, they speak frequently about layered strategies, and that's really an important thing to keep in mind. So if you think back to that brick wall metaphor that was shared before, all of those component parts by themselves probably can't make the type of difference that you're trying to make. Collectively, they add up to some really good mitigation efforts. So it's that layered strategy approach that is really helpful in what we've been focusing on in the district. And I think really all school districts or most school districts in the state and the nation have been focusing on that as well. And the final bullet point, and these are kind of pulled from that slide. This is kind of small and hard to read, but children and adolescents are able to transmit the virus, even though they might be more likely to be asymptomatic or even have milder symptoms. It doesn't mean that they can't pass that around, among others. And as I'd indicated, the Delta variant is impacting children and adolescents differently than the early strain of COVID-19. You probably painfully remember this model from last year. Probably all parents remember this one too, and this is oftentimes what we communicated about. So I know, you'll note that I indicate this is from last year, the 2021 metric that we were using, and it was the number of cases per 10,000 residents in a county over a 14-day period. And I wanted to share this because if we reflect back to where we were at a year ago, and granted, everything isn't perfect in the way we would love to have it now. We're not back at pre-pandemic protocols and the way we do business on a daily basis. But the most recent number for Hennepin County was 44.8, and I've highlighted that in red because it fits in that zone where if we were still using that metric and some modifications and added learning, the implementation of vaccinations, et cetera, our elementary kids would now be in hybrid learning. And assuming, that's, you know, probably wouldn't have worked out necessarily this way, but had we implemented the same model that we utilized last year, kids would be in an alternating day basis and doing distance learning together on Fridays from, not really together, but from their own homes and working more independently with our teachers. And our students in grade six through 12 would be in full distance learning. So anywhere in that range of 30 to 49 would have students there. So I wanted to share this just because I think it's important to reflect back on where we were at a year ago, and even though we're not at that place we would love to be, all of us want to be there and have these mitigation strategies behind us so that we can go back to the good old days, and we look forward to that. But we're not quite there yet, but we've come a long way when you think about the different place we're in 12 months later. I shared this metric with you oftentimes last year, and it's like a 10-week running total of those 14-day numbers that are calculated for Hennepin County. They also create a similar metric for the communities that comprise the school district. So I've listed Maple Grove, Minnetonka, Plymouth, and then there's kind of a clustering of some other suburban area, northwest suburban and west and south suburban communities as well. So I included the measurements that come to us. They send this out weekly. It comes to Dawn Wilson, and she forwards it on to us, and we track this over time. So I color-code this because I think it's interesting and helps see the trend, and the trend lines are off to the right in the final column. But really, where you want to be is more in that green area and not working into the orange and red. And you can see over the last 10 weeks, we've clearly been working our way toward that. And if you think of that metric that I shared earlier, that fifth 30 to 49 range, all of those numbers in probably about the last, well, the last two columns, and most of them in the third, fourth, and fifth from the right are in that range of hybrid learning for elementary and distance learning for secondary. So the numbers are up there using this metric, and I'll share some, some new ways that they're measuring here in a little bit. But I think it's helpful to look back to last year and have a good understanding about where we're at today. This is a chart that was in the Minnesota Department of Health presentation that was shared with the school nurses. And the blue bars represent last year, the 2021 school year, and the gold bars represent the current infection cases for students and staff. So you would expect that would be higher because last year, a lot of schools were in distance learning or in hybrid learning. We were separating kids by six feet. We had those other stronger mitigation efforts in place. And so you might expect early in the year that those numbers will be a little bit higher. But I think it's an interesting chart. We're all hoping that that's going to have a downward trend, so it'll level off and not approximate that kind of increase from a year ago in all those bars across that particular chart. But I thought that one was pretty, pretty interesting. This chart I put together and wanted to share a few things. This is kind of the new way of measuring. So if you look at those gold arrows and look at the ranges, there's really four different ranges right now of transmission levels. Low, that's where we want to be, moderate, substantial, and high. And you can see the numbers underneath each one of those headers about, you know, where the categories fit. So that's the new metric. That was, I think, originated with the CDC. MDH is utilizing that. And this Wolfson website that I'll speak a little bit more about in a minute, that professor from the University of Minnesota keeps track of all individual counties in the state of Minnesota and school districts in the state of Minnesota, and calculates these numbers on a weekly basis. So the range to get out of the, or the, the number that we shoot for to get out of this high level of transmission is something under 100. And if you look right above that gold arrow on the right, the most recent readings, and I'll share a little more detail on this in a minute, for the YZ School District was 288, and the low limit for high transmission level is 100. And the Hennepin County is 253. I did a lot of analysis over the weekend, different school districts across the state. The highest number in a school district right now, in a northern school district area, is above 1,000 in the number of cases per 100,000. And I think in most school districts, that number has really kind of followed a similar trend line. And somewhat related is I'll show here in a little bit to some of the mitigation strategies likely in place in those communities. I also wanted to highlight the two numbers that are to the left of the red arrow. That refers to positivity rate. And the second metric where it says percentage of positive nucleic acid amplification tests, I don't really know what that means. I took a major in biology, but I can't say I could tell you in layman's terms what that means. But the, the rate for zero to nine-year-olds right now is 6.78. So it's in that moderate level of transmission. And for 10 to 19-year-olds, it's in at 8.67. So that's in the substantial category. So it probably makes sense that as kids have come together and they've been interacting more in their activities and at school, that there's been more spread and more transmission. So a higher positivity rate is probably also related to the greater transmission capability of this particular variant. So I found these numbers to be really interesting. And you'll see off to the right, those are from September 24th. So fairly recent data, that's the most recent data that I had access to for that particular number, those numbers. If you look at the comparison of positivity rates, this is kind of the, on the right-hand side, the same numbers I just shared. But if you go back to the date of August 13th, when the data came out, I put in a yellow box in the graph on the chart. For zero to nine-year-olds, the positivity rate was 4.33%. So it was under five, therefore it's not printed in red. The 10 to 19-year-olds at that time were at 6.5. Now, if you move to the chart on the right, you'll notice that zero to nine-year-olds are now at a 6.78%. And the 10 to 19-year-olds are at 8.67%. So in about, I don't know, six weeks or so, that positivity rate, again, an indicator of the transmissibility of the Delta variant has really gone up in that timeframe. And I think it's important to, to keep that in mind along with that earlier metric that I shared with you. This is, anybody can go to this website and pull this information up if you're interested in doing so. It's listed there underneath of the header on this particular slide. You'll pull up charts for all the counties if you want. You can do a study of all the counties in the state of Minnesota. And all the school districts are also listed there, so you can get the local data as well. And this is the same number I showed you in that other graphic a little bit ago. Hennepin County is currently at 253. And then if you look at that number to the right, I didn't highlight that above, but it says 44.8. That's off of last year's metric. And again, that would be a metric that would call for hybrid learning at elementary and distance learning for high school and middle school. And then off to the right is the specific number for Wayzetta Schools. It's the most recent number on October 7th, a couple of days ago, 288. And the district number on that 10,000 per capita number is 49.4. And if you look at the graphics below, the color-coded, you'll see the trend lines or the data plot points are all in the red. And if you look at the key down below, that's that high transmission rate that I was speaking of. The moderate or substantial transmission is sort of that orange color, moderate, the canary. And the kind of purplish-blue on the bottom is a low transmission. So you can see, I think that first data point goes back to early August sometime. For Hennepin County, you can see that it's been really in that high, high transmission rate the entire time. Same for the Wayzetta Schools. And there were only a few that I pulled up. I looked at 88 different school districts over the weekend and learned a lot from what that looks like across the state. I only found a few that were even dipping down into substantial or moderate. So it was pretty interesting, at least I thought it was at the time. And it was interesting to kind of see how these trends are. Like I said, some of the numbers are incredibly high. The, the 200 ranges are actually among some of the lower ones that I stumbled on. If you look at that number, I highlighted the yellow data points. The first set on the far left goes back to August 7th. And Hennepin County was at 106, Wayzetta 107. Early September, 158 Hennepin County, 166 for Wayzetta. And last week, 251 in Hennepin County and 288 in Wayzetta. So again, the trend lines on the far right indicate a pretty good bump. I was a little concerned when I saw the change from September 30th to October 7th. And then it had really taken quite a jump during that timeframe. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with that now in about a week and see if that trend line continues. At some point, it's going to level off and plateau and then, you know, start coming down again. That seems to be the nature of how this works. On our website, you can find all this data. I just summarized it and made it look a little bit different. But there's, this is the cumulative total student and staff cases, September 1 through October 6. So there's a lot of zeros on there and there's a reason for that. They're highlighted, they're, they're summarized down below. And unless the number is five or greater, we don't put it on an itemized list for an individual school. But they get added up and put in that gold box and, and contribute to that Wayzetta total down on the bottom. So that just means where that 14 is, that indicates that in that column for October 6, somewhere in that array, there were 14 cases. You can see eight highlighted at Wayzetta High School. Others, different schools would have had a range of one to four. And we just don't itemize them on this list. But I thought it'd be interesting for you as board members and also for those here this evening to see the total number of cases that we've had in the bottom right-hand corner. 87 total in K, pre-K through 12 thus far. This next slide highlights a number of students that have been in quarantine, September 1 through October 6. We've quarantined 311 students. That does not count those who had a positive test. So if you want to know the total number that were impacted, because obviously if a student has a positive test, they are also not in school or they shouldn't be. And so we've had a, quite a number of students that have been impacted by this. We continue to look at our quarantine and exclusion process to help make sure that we're responding in a good way to ensure that we're not over-quarantining students. We're learning from this first month of school. And what, what makes sense for us as we move forward in regard to having students excluded from school. You might recall from earlier presentations, probably in September, also August, when we spoke about exceptions to quarantine. And if students are masked and determined to be in close contact with someone who tests positive, they do not need to quarantine. Or if a student is vaccinated and determined to be a close contact to somebody who tested positive, they also do not need to quarantine. That's turning out really to be kind of a big deal in regard to our school year. That, I would say that's among one of our bigger challenges right now is finding that sweet spot of how to best manage. When we send kids home, we don't take that lightly. We want to be responsive to the health protocols that are put in place. But we also don't want to be sending excessive numbers of kids home. That's a challenge for the families, it's a challenge for the students. It's a challenge for our teachers to be able to continue to provide an educational opportunity for those students while at the same time working with their students in the classroom. So that's a summary of our total number of quarantines. This was, this is a summary of my weekend work. And I do hope that I've got the numbers correct on this, and I'm pretty confident that I do. I double-checked a number of times. This was the result of my review of 800, of 88 school districts in the state of Minnesota. And I'm going back to this Wolfson website that I spoke about earlier, and I pulled up individual school districts. The criteria could have been different, but this is what I chose. I, I took the six data points that are currently listed for each school district. I took all of the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. I know the school board members know exactly what that is. Those that are here that may not know what AMSD is, or the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. As you might guess, it's all of the metropolitan school districts in the St. Paul, Minneapolis area and surrounding communities. I also looked at Minnesota school districts that has at least one city of 7,500 residents. And that's an arbitrary number. I could have chosen 5,000 if I wanted to work another five hours on this, or I could have chosen five, I could have gone to 10,000 or 5,000, depending on how many districts I may wanted to look at. But I thought that this seemed like a city that's relatively large and it gets a lot of cities from around the state rather than just in the metro. I wanted to see kind of what's happening around the state as well. I looked also at a few of the districts to the west of us that are adjacent to our school district. And again, a total of about 88. So if you look at the chart below on the far left, I have, I looked at what I've called blended and the definitions are below. Those are districts that have both required and recommended. For example, might be required in elementary and part of middle school and optional or recommended only for high school. So I call those districts blended in K-12. Optional means that just what it says, for students, it's student family choice. It's optional for grades K-12. And universal would be, Wayzetta is an example of that, and many districts are an example of that. So as I looked at those 88 school districts, I found that there were a relatively small number with this blended model. I only was able to, of, of fitting those criteria on top, there were only 12. Some are in the metro, some are, well, I think most of them probably are in the metro area. But there were likely a few of them that were in some of the larger cities in the state of Minnesota, but not part of the metro. The optional of those districts that fit those criteria, there were 37. And for the universal masking, 39. So that 12 is probably kind of a smaller number. The 37 and 39 were probably a better number to look at. But I looked at those six data points and I looked at the difference between how much it had gone up from September 2nd to October 7th. And I just want to be clear, I wouldn't necessarily use this metric as a reason to start doing something or stop doing something. But I found it interesting and I kind of wanted to find out, what's the average of these districts that have this blended model? Those that are optional and those that are universal. And if you look at that percentage point on the far right, for those that have the blended model of the ones that I looked at from the, the 12 districts that were in that model, they had an increase of 81.4% on the Wolfson model. For those that were recommended but not required, or what I've called the optional, there was an increase from the data October 7th to September 2nd of 110%. And for those that have a universal masking, again, that fit in that criteria, about 71% increase. So everybody's increasing. And again, I can't say it's because of the masking policy that these numbers are different. In fact, my real hypothesis on this would be it's a combination of those mitigation strategies that I spoke about before. And what are communities doing collectively to help bring forth navigating the pandemic? So again, I'm not putting this out there saying, you know, those that are doing universal masks are better than or doing better than everyone else. But I found the numbers interesting and I think a total of 88 school districts. And determining what model do they have in place is interesting. And, and I think it provides additional guidance and another concept or data point for us to think about. And the way I determined what their masking policy was, some of my just knew, there's some AMSD information that kind of gives a summary for those districts. Or I went on their website and just tried to figure out what model are they implementing? And when did they start that? And some have changed for a variety of reasons. A couple I know started out optional and then moved to universal because they had some outbreaks and they felt the need to be responsive. And it'd be interesting to see what those changes might be in the coming weeks. Now with these numbers continuing to go up, if it plateau, I guess, my guess would be people will kind of stay the course if they are in an optional model. But if they continue going up, I think some districts might be in a position to give that some additional thought. But I went to the websites and I chose where they started the school year. So rather than go to where they switched to last week, where did they start the school year? Because I felt the data on here was more reflective of the start and the ongoing weeks. So anyway, I've probably spoken enough about that, but I think it's some interesting data. And, you know, at least one data point that can be instructive and helpful as we continue to navigate through this to a better place. At this point, I'm going to give Dr. Flansberg an opportunity to share a little bit about some of our other mitigation strategies. And he's been working real closely with principals. Part of his work, a primary part of his work is to work directly in tandem with the principal. So I wanted him to share a little bit about some of these points. So Nate, if you would.
Superintendent Anderson, Madam Chair, members of the board, community members, thank you for allowing me to be able to present this evening. I need to begin by saying a big thank you to Dana Miller, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, and Sam Fredrickson, one of the members of her team, is a principal on special assignment to have been helping oversee the, the quarantine supports for many of our students who have needed those supports while they have gone into quarantine. As Dr. Anderson said, we had a number of students who have gone into quarantine. I believe the number was 311 that you saw earlier on a slide. And one of the things that I would like to be able to bring everyone's attention to again was our two goals. Ensuring the health and wellbeing of students and staff while keeping students in school every day throughout the school year. And at five weeks in, we do feel like we have a, a couple of data points that we felt comfortable reevaluating our quarantine process. For instance, I could look at our elementary students and recognize that of all of our elementary students, we haven't seen any community spread from close contacts, which is a positive. It's telling us our mitigations and layered strategies are working because masks is not the only thing that we're doing. We're focusing on spacing of our students, unique cafeteria situations for lunchroom. Trans, the high school, the middle schools, if able, are opening up outside eating for students, rotating lunches, depending on how the cafeterias are set up at some of our elementary schools. And even having some of our kindergartners eat in their rooms to allow more spacing in some of our, our locations when kids are unmasked. And we recognize there isn't just one mitigation strategy that we're using, but many that are layered. And recognizing how we have not had any spread with any of the students that we have needed to quarantine, we are actually changing one of our practices. So quarantines will not be mandated if all staff and students have been masked, if they are in those situations. We're going to be watching that very closely because we don't want to put something out there that then goes back to ensuring the health and wellbeing of staff and students that has a negative impact. So while we're making that, that change, it's to keep kids in school to be able to allow them to learn. Students who test positive for COVID-19 will continue to follow our current quarantine practices. So that, there's no change there. If students are masked and determined to be a close contact, and again, we're saying within three feet for 15 minutes or longer, we're going to continue to make sure parents and guardians are notified regarding exposure. But the students are not going to be required to quarantine. Parents may always choose to self-quarantine when their students are considered a close contact. And we will maintain and keep those supports that are in place to be able to help those students if they need support from a distance academically. Indoors, if unmasked, individuals who are indoors and unmasked who are determined to be a close contact, again, six feet for 15 minutes or more will need to quarantine. The lunchroom setting would be that example. Quarantine and isolation timelines continue to follow the MDH guidelines. Outdoors, no contact tracing is taking place when students are outdoors. And we're continuing to really work hard with our teachers. Should classrooms move outside for instructional purposes, snack, et cetera? We're asking teachers continue to help distance students to the best of their ability to really limit possible exposure if students are unmasked. Mitigation strategies continuing again are busing. We have actually been shifting this practice for the past few weeks. Contact tracing will not take place on the school buses, but all parents on the bus will be notified of a potential exposure on the bus when somebody does test positive for COVID-19. Part of that shift was when kids are on the bus, they're wearing masks. Many of our students are wearing hats or hoodies and they were finding it extremely difficult with the busing. They were looking at every single video of all of the students and checking video for hours throughout the day to try to do contact tracing. And they found that that was exceptionally difficult. And our LSNs, who also deserve a significant amount of credit for the amount of time and effort and energy that they have put in, were working deep into the night, oftentimes eight, nine, 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, just to make sure that they could try to do that. It was, they found that unsustainable with their, their routines and recognized a general awareness letter to all of the families on the bus was our current practice and that has been working thus far. Exemptions to quarantine, again, if you've tested positive for COVID-19 in the past 90 days, if you've been fully vaccinated 14 days from the last dose in the series, and students who have been over three feet from others when both are fully masked. And we're going to continue again, if you're, if you are fully masked, there's an exemption to quarantine at this time, but we're going to be following that exceptionally close to make sure that we are keeping our students healthy. Isolation, when someone has tested positive, even if they're vaccinated, they still must isolate for 10 days from the time the symptoms begin, if they're, even if they're asymptomatic. Household members, and just a reminder, all unvaccinated persons living within the household where somebody has tested positive, they do need to quarantine for 14 days. And if the person has tested positive, is not able to isolate from other household members, other persons must isolate within the person who tested positive and then quarantine for an additional 14 days. So this is where you look at it and when you're, you're looking at the possibility of 24 days of quarantine, that's a long time. And again, we want to really be able And again, we want to really be able to focus on what can we do to shorten those exposures, shorten those times to be able to get kids back in school. And again, when we're looking at the possibility of vaccinations being a significant way to be able to keep kids in school. All other non-household close contacts again do qualify for the shortened quarantine if the unvaccinated close contact is able to show proof. Of the negative molecular PSR test from three days from the last contact with the person who tested positive. Mitigation strategies as it pertains to testing. Binax now home tests are for symptomatic students and available from our licensed school nurses. We received a large number of these home tests complimentary, and so we, no cost to the district. They are optional and they're offered only as a convenience to families. So if there is a suspected close contact, if they are expected suspected to have symptoms, they are offered. We do not test students onsite, nor do we endorse any specific test. We're offering these up because they were provided to the district free of charge. We will continue to monitor available options for additional testing for families. Just a reminder that last year Wayzata Public Schools offered vaccination clinics for staff, community and students twelve and older. On the following dates, at the high school, May nineteenth and June ninth, and at Central Middle School, May twentieth and June tenth. I think everybody is aware that they are talking about the possibility of younger vaccination capacity. And there's a tentative and optional vaccination clinic that we are setting aside for our community members, again, optional. And those would be held at Central Middle School, November twelfth and December thirteen, third, third. But that is dependent upon the passing from the CDC on a vaccination available for kids five and older. I'll hand it back to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Flansberg. Just a few closing thoughts here and then if you have questions, we'll be certainly happy to respond to those. So I did just want to share a few general school opening thoughts, some of the challenges primarily are related around staffing. Right now we're doing okay, but I know and talking to our David Muskleblad, who does our scheduling of substitutes. He's very concerned about where we're currently at with that. So we really need to do our best to keep our teachers healthy and and their kids healthy, many who have kids going to other schools. So they're kind of subject to whatever the protocols may be. And all kinds of different districts around the metro and surrounding areas. So that substitute teacher shortage is a challenge. So far, we've been able to fill our available slots either through bringing in a substitute or having other staff kind of fill in and and. Meet the need on a daily basis. Wayzata Kids continues to be a challenge. I don't know the exact number now, but somewhere between three hundred plus kids and three hundred and fifty are still wanting to get that before and after school childcare. We can't get applicants, we've tried. I saw our staffing specialist standing on the corner with a sign one day up on one oh one and fifty five. And trying to hold up a sign saying we're looking for staff. And so if anybody in the audience, if you have knowledge about somebody who may have an interest in helping us out for a couple hour shifts after school. Please have them contact our HR office. Wayzata Cafes is a real challenge, that's our new name for the Culinary Express. Again, from a staffing perspective and and as I indicate, number two below. They really having a supply chain problem with cafeteria supplies, paper products. And also some of the food supplies, so that's a challenge for them. Kudos to Michelle Sagadoll and her team for doing their best to try to make sure that we can feed our students every day. We have record numbers of students eating in our cafeterias this year, which is great. But it's coming at a time when we're most challenged to be able to deliver. So I don't know what you're hearing as parents from your kids when they're coming home about their lunch experience. I hope it's favorable, but some of the lines might be a little bit longer. I sort of understand that they're shortening and and moving in the right direction. Again, staffing challenges with paraprofessionals and bus drivers are one of the few school districts in the metro right now for sure. That has a driver for every bus. You may have heard of some of the surrounding districts that literally had to cancel twenty percent of their bus routes. Because they didn't have drivers for the buses and we're asking parents to drive their kids to school. So that's a challenge, thankfully for the time being, we have one driver per bus, which is a good ratio. However, beyond that, we don't have a lot of leftovers or extras. So if you're so inclined to become a bus driver, give me a call, I'll get you hooked up to the right people. Staff workload, you know, as I said before, none of this has been easy for anybody in the last year and a half. Teachers have worked incredibly hard to do the best they can, all the support staff have. I know the principals have worked really hard as well. Nate mentioned earlier, I think our LSNs and the work they've been doing with contact tracing, that's been a really heavy lift to try to do all of that work. On top of all the other work that they're doing. And, you know, it's just been kind of an add on for them. And of course, teachers continuing to help meet the needs of students even when they're not in school. And then just a few closing thoughts, you know, we spoke about our two primary goals, we'll stay focused on those, keep students and staff safe. And keep students at school for in-person learning. We're going to try to do everything we can to help ensure that we can do that through the course of the year. We do appreciate the feedback from parents, there's been a lot of it in the last eighteen months. We do listen to it, we do try our best to respond to it. As I've shared before, we have about seventy thousand residents in the footprint of our school district and about twenty four thousand parents. So as you might guess, there's a wide range of inputs and our job as administrators and school board members as well. Is to take all those inputs and try to put something together that we think is responsive to the greatest numbers of needs. So I know that hasn't felt like enough maybe to some in the district and I apologize for that, we work hard at it. We are perfect at it and I acknowledge and realize I may not be the most popular guy in town sometimes, but we're doing the best we can. And we'll keep doing that and trying to ensure that we deliver a great product for your your kids and that they're learning and growing and enjoying their time with us. I shared before that conditions are much improved. I mean, last year, the mitigation strategies and the inconveniences and all the things that we were working with, the list was very long. This year, the primary focus area is kind of on masking and and mitigation efforts that feel less intrusive than having kids be home for two or three days a week. But, you know, it's challenging, none of us like that, we don't like having to to wear masks and to deal with things out of the norm. But for right now, that's still a strategy that's being recommended. From our health agencies across the country, the CDC, MDH, the American Academy of Pediatrics and just a number of individuals. Continue to share that that's an important mitigation strategy. Not the only one or the one that will make the main difference, but it contributes. And and I believe it helps and and does make a difference and I think many do. We've been fortunate so far that we haven't had to cancel any fall sports or activities. So participants have not missed out on any events due to COVID nineteen outbreaks. So it's possible kids obviously miss things for various reasons, some maybe even for being out or quarantined. But we haven't had to cancel football games or volleyball meets or anything to this point. So I knock on wood, I hope I didn't just jinx it, but we've been fortunate. And as I've shared this, I shared this at a couple, the last couple of board meetings too, regardless of whatever our circumstances are, I just want to assure our board and those in attendance tonight in our larger community. Our teachers, principals and all of our support staff have been working really hard and they're going to continue to do that, to do the very best that they can. And we'll keep focusing on achieving those two goals that are listed in number one above. And as we'll close with a statement, I'll just read it, I haven't read a lot of this word for word, but despite the challenges, it's been a very positive start to the school year. Students are in school, they're five days a week, if we have a five day week. Participating in activities, enjoying special events, including homecoming, middle school field trips. Elementary fun runs and regular routines for early learners. So again, my thanks to our staff and everybody that's worked so hard and to our parents. I know it's not easy for you either, it's really challenging. We appreciate all that you do and and appreciate that you're working in partnership with us to help deliver the very best that we can for our students. With that, we've rambled on for quite some time, I hope this was helpful and shared some insights that are helpful to your understanding of our current standing. So Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, we welcome the rambling, lots of great information. Thank you, Mr. Flansberg, for the part that you that you contributed and I'm guessing we have lots of questions or comments. Anything from board members?
Yeah, I do, thank you, Dr. Anderson, and thank you, Dr. Flansberg, this was really helpful. And although we're all watching it, it's nice to see it all in one spot. I'm wondering if you could help us remember, because I think we talked about it in September, but not not since. Why do we have the hours for our masking at the high school and at the elementary schools? And why are we not asking students to mask at football games? And just really, what's the logic behind tho- that decision?
Yeah, I think I can respond to that. We just used as a starter our high school, imagine bringing three thousand seven hundred students into the same building. Relatively narrow hallways when you consider that number of students when they're out passing from class to class. Classes vary in size, so it's a relatively large number of individuals coming together for a full day indoors. After school, a great percentage of those students leave the building. And if they're there for an activity or a club or something that is indoors, there's great opportunity to spread them out. We have large commons areas, cafeterias, the theater lobby. And, you know, there's great opportunity for kids to get, you know, closer to that six feet of social distancing or even more. And sometimes they're probably in classrooms, it does give them an opportunity to get a break from the masks, quite frankly. And a lot of kids are also involved in outdoor co-curriculars, so for soccer, bat- or football. Other sports that are outdoors, it kind of fits in that rule where masking requirements in our district are not a requirement for outdoors. So I think that answered your question or at least responded to what you asked, I'm not sure it satisfied what you were looking for, but those would be some responses that I would have.
And just a follow up quick if I can, Madam Chair, too, is it, is there ever a time, so we require it until six thirty? Or six at the elementary students where there's childcare and we know that students need childcare. But is there ever a time when students are mandated to be in the building after school or in those hours? Or are the students that are in the building outside of those masking hours really there optionally?
Well, that's a good question, I don't know without the benefit of a little more reflection, if you know what the requirements might be. I would say for most kids, they're done at the end of the day when the school day is over. We do have a lot of community user groups, we're back to being able to utilize our facilities or let others utilize our facilities. One of the challenges after three thirty and after six o'clock is how do you monitor and manage it? And, you know, we have a lot of user groups that they all have their own different rules for protocols that they want to follow. And I think in some ways it's, you know, maybe a, just a logistical decision that you really can't manage it or monitor it. When there are user groups that aren't part of the school district. And we have, I think, on a couple of occasions, I think in terms of the the homecoming dance, I know that there was a requirement, that would be an example of a. An after school one and you heard a report earlier, we sold, I think, nineteen hundred to two thousand tickets. So again, in tight quarters, the decision was made to implement that for the the homecoming dance as well. You might recall in the resolution you passed in August, it did say after those times unless otherwise communicated. So there may be some unique circumstances where we would feel that that mitigation strategy would would still make good sense.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Linda.
Thank you, and and thanks to both of you for all that information, it was really helpful and thorough and. And gave us a picture of what's happening, I just have a rather specific question. You talked about these quick tests that were donated to the to the district. And I'm wondering if they are for parents' use in addition to student use or family's use? And where if somebody wanted to use one of those, how would they get it or pick it up?
It's a great question, I think one of my team members may have the answer for that. If not, I think they're only student tests. They're available from the LSNs in the health offices in the schools. I couldn't tell you for sure where they came from or how many we have. I don't think they're for parent use, but maybe you know, yep, they're students only. And they're optional, obviously, and if a family would like to have one for their child, all they have to do is call the school nurse and request one. And their take home test so the kids could bring them home.
Right, thanks.
Sure.
Cheryl.
Just a quick question, thank you for all the information. I guess I would just want to encourage the principals in the buildings to look at ideas for lunchtime. Because that's really kind of where exposure is going to happen when the kids don't have their masks on and they're sitting closer together. Because there's only so many tables in the cafeterias and while it's still relatively warm outside. You know, use whatever methods they can to spread kids out, get fresh air and things like that. So I just would highly encourage us to be thinking if our numbers continue to rise. We're going to really have to do everything we can to try and mitigate that, so.
Thank you, appreciate that input, did you have any comment on that or what principals are working on?
I think the only thing I would add is, I'll use West Middle School with Principal Carlson as an example. They implemented an outdoor eating area earlier this fall. And it's been so popular that they are looking at keeping that as a as a permanent fixture to kind of their lunch options. And they're looking at supervision and they're, the kids will absolutely love it as an opportunity to get outside. So as long as the weather's nice and we're able to maintain those opportunities. I know that Ryan Carlson has also talked about looking at other ways, you know, at West. For one example, when outside is not an option, where could he extend lunches with a alternative, alternative hyatt spaces? That they would be able to access as well. So and again, I'll go back to the elementary principals, I give them a lot of kudos for the creative scheduling that they're actually working on. With Michelle Sagadoll and John Deutsch and and working in partnership with the cafes and custodial teams. To create some rolling lunches to be able to try to space students out even more than they would normally be. So they've been working hard, will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Chris.
So I apologize for getting into the weeds here. First of all, I appreciate the update because I think this ongoing monitoring is what we talked about in August when we addressed the whole. Issue of what we're going to do for mitigation strategies. So huge amount of appreciation to to both of you and your teams for putting all of this information together. So as a as a follow up to that. And and Dr. Anderson, I don't want to ruin one of your future weekends, but I love the analysis. Around the universal versus blended versus optional kind of way to characterize mask policies in different school districts. Instead of having you look at eighty eight school districts again, I think it would be interesting at some. You know, at some appropriate time in the future, I don't know if that's in a month, I don't know when it is. But if we could look at similarly situated districts in terms of maybe their level of community spread. And and do a similar analysis and and look at the numbers on a per capita or, you know, kind of as a percentage of total enrollment basis. To see what some of those percentages look like. I'm most curious about how those other school districts are faring that do have. Other types of mask policies in place. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, that a lot of districts are going to dramatically change the way they're, where they're at right now. Because of the unfortunate increase in some of the numbers we're seeing. But I think it would be interesting to look at those from a couple of different perspectives, again, at that appropriate point in time. But I I do greatly appreciate the analysis that you did.
Thank you for that and, you know, there are some districts that have that blended model where maybe the high school is more flexible. And I did do a little bit of poking around with that over the weekend, but it's really difficult, I looked at the different. I'm trying to think of the word, the the metrics on the on the website for each of the districts about how many kids have been quarantined and how many have had positive cases. And because there's no standard format statewide, everybody's created their own, it takes a lot of interpretation. And I would have had to exercise a lot of qualitative judgment over the weekend to try to figure out, okay, what exactly are they doing? This, and that's why I like the collective approach with the bigger package, because it, you know, statistically, it probably helps. And it's always difficult to know what, how are they implementing quarantines? You know, what's the level of subjectivity and when they determine this child goes home or this one stays here? And it's really kind of a challenge when you compare one school to another. Just even looking at the student bodies, I mean, some high schools may have, and ours is probably in this camp, fewer than five percent open enrolled kids. So ninety five percent of our kids live within the footprint of the school district. How do you compare maybe to a district where they might have thirty five or forty percent open enrolled kids who come from every community in the metro area? So that, and I'm not making excuses for not being able to do it, I don't know how to do that specifically, where you find ways to equalize. I don't know how to do that specifically, where you find ways to equalize that. But I know our high school principal, Scott Gangler, is in regular communication with those principals that are connected to us either by the conference, athletic conference or other groups. And he's also got a national consortium that he started a few years ago. And I think with about ten or twelve high school principals where there are single large high schools in their communities. And he's in regular frequent communication with them and, and trying to learn from what they've done as well. So we will continue to look for the best ways to do that. And as I indicated earlier, I think it's going to be interesting to monitor here in the coming weeks to see our districts making changes, significant changes to some of their mitigation strategies based on what the current numbers are doing. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor. And as I said before, I know everybody wants to get out of masks and into the, the way things were. But we also want to achieve those goals. We want to keep kids in their activities and sports. And what can we do to maximize that opportunity? But I know that was more answers than you even asked a question about, but.
Thank you.
They come to mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, I just wanted to make one quick comment that I, I'm concerned about the, the staffing challenges that we have that you talked about. And I just wanted to hope that we could enlist everyone in the audience tonight to be talent scouts for us or anybody who might be watching this on the live stream. If you know anyone who would be interested in being a substitute teacher or working for Wazetta Kids or Wazetta Cafes, we really need the help. And also based on that, I just want to thank the people who already work in those departments because you know how it is when you're short-staffed. Everyone is working really hard and it's stressful. So thanks to all the people who already work, the teachers and the people in culinary, Wazetta Cafes and in our childcare. So I think that's it. Anything else? All right. Thank you so much for the presentation.
And thank you for your questions and for giving us the opportunity. And thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Dr. Flansburgh, thanks for your help. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have finance and business services. And we have our monthly, our monthly financial reports. I will hand it over to DeeDee Carrying.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. As usual, we have included in your packet our financial reports for the period ending August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. In that is the analysis of those financial reports, the statement of revenue, statement of expenses, and investments summary as well. There's only two months into the year, so not a whole lot of data yet to this point. But the only noticeable thing is in our community service fund, our revenue was at one, one point nine million dollars compared to seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars a year ago. And then it says everything to do with the fact that we were in COVID last year at heavy and not able to service our students and sta, staff and as we did in previous, due to social distancing. So that's a pleasant increase. On the statement of expenditures, overall, our expenditures are comparable with the prior years. As again, you'll note in our report that, that refunding of that bond took place and that's a footnote within there. It overinflates both our revenue and our expense. So again, as I mentioned, we're early into the fiscal year. We continue to monitor both the revenue expense. I've got a great team doing that and working side by side. So we also compare the actual to the budget from, and from year to year. So there's no school board action required on this and, and appreciate that you take the time to review those. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much. All right. Next on our agenda, we have board reports. And this evening, we have a board report from Bonita Lucky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pretty excited to talk a little bit more to the community just about some of the other work that's pretty exciting when it comes down to being on certain committees. And the first one I want to talk a little bit about is the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, where I serve as chair. And just to know how the makeup of this, this model process is designed to promote and be reflective of conversations between school board members and the superintendent. And we have established a sustainable ongoing process to include quarterly check-in. And also it is a collaborative approach for the purpose to recognize success as well as continuous improvement of performance for both the superintendent and the school district so that student achievement reaches its full potential. Another committee that I am a part of that I absolutely have learned a lot and I am enjoying is teaching and learning. And it's comprised of leaders that are passionate for excellence for each and every student. Keeping us, keeping focus on the strategic roadmap and using that as a guided compass. Also, I am pretty excited about being a part of a neighboring community board, which is called the Minnesota School Board Directors of Color. This is a network of directors of color that navigate unique and different experiences across Minnesota. Some of the locations include Robinsdale, Hopkins, Richfield, St. Louis Park, St. Anthony, New Brighton, Minneapolis, Roseville, Osseo, Wazetta, St. James, Man, Van Cato, Friendly, St. Paul, Brooklyn Center Community, and Inter Grove Heights, Morehead, and Bloomington. The purpose and goal of that is to share vision, share best practices, and be a collaborative partner with trusted allies to bring the best for good school board governance and leadership. So super excited of being a part of boards in addition to the work that we do. And it has been a joy and my privilege and pleasure to be a part of.
Thank you, Bonita. Are there any other board reports this evening? Okay, I will share that the Wazetta School Board election will be held on Tuesday, November second. And early and absentee voting are now available. Our district website lists information about the election process, voting, links to candidate websites, as well as a link to the candidate forum conducted by the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for all their work to ensure that our community has the ability to understand where our candidates stand on the issues. All of this information can be found on the school board webpage on the district website. And with that, this concludes our Wazetta Public Schools regular board meeting for October eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.